Okay, the Grand Forks County Commission will come to order. All commissioners except Commissioner Peach are present, but she's going to be joining us shortly. We'll proceed with our. The first matter is the approval of the minutes. So moved a motion to approve the minutes. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Ingham. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes are approved now. The approval of the order of the agenda. Are there any changes anyone wants to make? Thank you. We have a motion. Motion by Commissioner Ingham. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The order of the agenda is set. The approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the agenda? Any commissioner would like pulled for discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Motion by Commissioner Knopf, second by Ross. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. And I note for the record that Commissioner Peach is now on the line. Our first matter of business is Dr. Senz. Good to have you.
Good to be here, commissioners. Thank you very much. Those of you that don't know me, I'm Mary Anzens, and I'm your coroner. I've been the coroner for almost 20 years now. It seems unbelievable. What I'm actually asking you today is that our budget is made up not only from the county, but also contributions from other counties under the state, under the university. And I would like to, if that becomes problematic with some personnel issues. And what I'd like to do is to pull out, not, I'm not asking for an increase in my funding, but to take some of the money that you would be paying me and be able to pay a student to work part-time in, as an autopsy assistant. Because she's going into graduate school, she can't be employed in that capacity at the university. I also, there is usually a secretarial fee, and I need to check to see if that's been incorporated or not. But I would like, if it hasn't, if it has been, I'd like to pull that out and actually you know, part-time secretary, someone that could fill in for hours and stuff. I'm not asking for an increase, just a re-budget. And that's it.
Does it matter?
I mean.
That's kind of where I'm wondering.
You know.
Your own budget, so as long as you stay within
Yeah.
The constraints of the budget.
I was told to come, so I wanted to see you.
Oh, well, I should too.
Yeah, it's good to see you once in a while. Now, we have oh, oh, we got a thorn here right now.
Hello. So, I'm Michelle Field. We've been emailing back and forth. So I just wanted to give a little clarity. What Dr. Senz and I have been discussing is an autopsy assistant position that would be a county position. So it would be adding a non-benefited part-time position, her intent is to have this ongoing. So it's not like it's just for this specific period of time. She's fully aware that the person would need to be under nineteen hours a week or less to be non-benefited. And then I, Debbie and I had had a conversation, and we were the ones who said, you need to come and talk to the commission because it would be adding an employee to the head count for the county.
Okay. And actually, if we do the secretary, that might be two head counts.
Okay, and would that also be a part-time?
I think I've got, what, ten thousand something? It's not much.
I don't recall.
Now, take care of the secretarial position.
Yes.
So there's two positions.
We're not even the needing position. We're just adding these two, but it's within budget.
So, to keep everybody happy here, I would entertain a motion.
I would make that motion.
To allow the.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we'll make the motion to allow the coroner's office to add an autopsy assistant and a secretary, both under nineteen hours, so they're non-benefited. And they're paid out of their budget. There will be no budget increases. Okay, so we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion on it? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Good to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much. And to catch you up, Mr. Roche knows this, but I have applied for a fellowship position to be, so we would be training forensic pathologist right here in Grand Forks County. The application is in. I've arranged with the bean to provide funding for that. And we will, it's being evaluated in October, and you will know in January. So hopefully, we'll have trainees here in North Dakota. Hopefully, some will stay.
No, you're good.
And that's still the place that's going on in this area.
That's the only place, yes. There's a fellowship. There's one in Minneapolis. There's two in Chicago, two in Milwaukee, and then you have to go over to Seattle, so.
Good job.
Yeah.
And we did, we also maintained our accreditation. Our accreditation was, so a few weeks ago, when the letter came back, and we are, we maintain full accreditation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Public health is next. Ms. Swanson is here. She indicates that she doesn't have any new information for us, but she's available if the commission has any questions. Have any questions?
Do you? So.
Let me.
The color code or the colored chart, we went up to red, and that's based on hospitalizations. Is that it with COVID?
Commissioner Knopf and commissioners, I don't have all the details on how that's calculated. It's calculated by the CDC, but those are the primary factors that they look at, rather than just transmission rates. They're looking more at hospitalizations and other factors. Our, we did move to high transmission, and that's not unique. A number of counties have moved in that regard. For COVID-19.
So, we get that information, but does the general public get that? How does that get shared with you? I don't see anything on the media.
Oh, Commissioner Knopf, we do send out our dashboard every Friday to several hundred people, and most of several boards, commissions, committees, and residents who have requested it. And then we try to post it on our social media. But you're correct in that we haven't had a news release, and I will bring that back to our communications.
Because it just, you know, I guess if there's any way that you can get that information out there, thankfully, I see more people again wearing masks, which is good, as far as I'm concerned. But, but I think that there's a lot of people that don't know that the numbers are going up again. I just think it's important that they know that for whatever reason.
Thank you. I will take that back to our team. We are aware that masks are recommended when you're in high transmission. And I've recently worn a mask because I'm trying to protect someone who is immunocompromised. But I highly encourage those to.
I heard, and I think the base is going back to wearing masks. That's true. Well, that's, you know, a sign that our numbers are getting higher.
Any other questions I can answer? Thank you.
Correction, sir. This is our holder.
Chairman Paul, members of the commission, I apologize that I had something out to you rather than having it to you, but I've been working with HR to try and get this to you yet today, rather than delay it two weeks to the next. Commission me, what I've got before you are two recommended policy changes at the correction center. One dealing with stipend pay and one dealing with on-call. Currently, we do not have an on-call system, on-call pay system, or a stipend pay system. And we're trying to work to figure out ways to get more officers available. Yes, we have, like last week, when we're, when we're drafting this, I had four officers on Thursday had already had sixty-nine hours in for the week. And on that given team, the lowest anyone had, I think, was forty-nine. And we were looking for help that week on the weekend again. And knowing that we were going to have to call these people potentially in for another twelve to twenty-four hours. So working with HR, what we've come up with is an on-call system for Friday, Saturday, Sunday, which would actually be for six different shifts. Because we're a twenty-four-hour facility, we need to look at every one of those shifts differently than just being on-call. Because we can't take someone, for example, that works on Friday all day and be on-call Friday night. They physically can't do that, or if they worked Sunday from six forty-five PM to seven in the morning on Monday, they can't work again at eight o'clock on Monday either. So it was divided into six different shifts. Each one of them identified, and as I understand, using the minimum wage standard of how you compute what they could be eligible for on-call, is how we came up with the ninety dollars per shift to be on-call. The purpose of this would then be is when we are at minimal staffing, which we frequently are, we would have a means of getting people available on the weekends off. For example, they only have every other weekend off, and right now it gets more and more difficult to find these people available on that, for these shifts. So by doing this way and having them on-call, they'd be guaranteed something, but they don't know that they have to work for sure. It will be a cost of ninety dollars per shift, but it would only be happen to be utilized when we're at minimum staffing. On a Saturday morning, when we're at our minimum staffing and two inmates get in a fight, we need to send someone up to the hospital. We need officers. We need additional officers, so we're trying to call people in. This will allow me to get on the phone. Call an officer that knows that they might be called in, come in and work the remaining of that ship and or go up to the hospital with it. So that's the one idea. That was policy F-15.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
So if they're on-call, so that's ninety dollars a shift that they sign up for. So if they don't have to come in, do they still get that ninety dollars?
Yes.
Whether they have work or not?
Yes.
Is that exempt?
Exactly.
Or that's just non-exempt staff?
Correct. Right? Or the name, sort of calling.
The on-call?
That's good.
We have one, one, one way, one way, help me refer.
I thought the on-call.
Here we are. One, one vote for one, the other they are not.
Yeah, call one.
So the on-call is all non-exempt?
Yeah, the only one can't get it is Brett.
Yes.
Yeah, so yes.
Yes.
So it's for exempt and not exempt for the.
For the on-call, the stipend.
Right, yeah. But for eligible exempt employees, so only we see the on-call pay and not actual hours worked. And for non-exempt, they get the actual hours worked plus the on-call pay. Yeah, I want to repeat that, so.
Yes. You want to help.
So all eligible employees would be eligible for the on-call pay, except for the administrator of the correctional center. So for non-exempt employees, they would get the on-call pay plus actual hours worked. And for exempt employees, they would just get the on-call pay because they need a flat salary. So it's just a flat.
The, yes.
That's a fair question. So if someone's on-call and they're called in for you only need him for the morning, do they then go home, or do they have to continue to work the whole shift for you?
If there would not be a need for them, they would be able to go home, but they would still remain on-call if that situation arose. And then at three o'clock in the afternoon, we had another fight. And we got other inmates that need to be brought on, so they should be called back. Yes. Then, now, can everyone, we have sixteen stipend pay. Stipend pay would be a means of recognizing all the extra shifts that we are mandating people work and award them a small stipend, and also encourage them when we're short-staffed and need someone on short notice to come in. And that payment for them would be twenty-five dollars a shift if it's under twelve and a half, twelve and a quarter hour shift, or fifty dollars if they work the full twelve and a quarter hour shift. So that would be, for example, someone who, we don't have anyone on-call, something happens, and we need someone here now. Trying to find incentives to get the available, either what we came up with.
Sure. Yeah, question? Yeah. So is this one different? On-call is when you're minimum staff, and you have people actually on-call. Other times, you might need someone to come in, but you don't have anyone on-call during the week or something, right?
Exactly.
That's when this kind of extra pay would help.
Commissioner Ingham, members of the commission, that's exactly when it would most likely happen, but it could also happen on a weekend where when we're at minimum staffing, we have someone on-call, we have two officers on-call and say that we still need two more, two more bodies.
I guess the obvious question is, yeah, what does this, your budget or how is this taken care of?
Commissioner Paul, members of the commission, right now, being nine FTE short for most of the entire year. I have more than enough to pay for this to get me through the end of this year. And we do have a sunset in here of December thirty-fourth, first of this year, or is until the operations don't be necessary. So it could be something that's short-lived, or could be a little bit longer than that. But it would, of course, be, if it was longer, I'd have to absorb it into my budget to figure out how to work with it.
Well, I think you probably should figure that out, because I don't see us getting out of this for any time in the near future, but.
Commissioner Paul, some of the good news is we've had more applicants, but we have twenty-two, twenty-two applicants. This is the first time we've been in double digits with applicants for a long time. So.
I like fifteen.
And we've actually had more of them showing up for interviews than we've seen in a long time. So I think we're making some progress. It feels like we are.
I, and I'm not being negative about it. It's just been, I think it's been for quite some time that we've been shorted. I think that's just part of the animal. We're going to have to deal with that. I think this is a good plan. This encourages people to, to be available for emergencies or overtime or whatever. And it's fair to, too, that if, you know, they have to, instead of going to life or whatever, they're going to stick around Grand Forks in case they get called to work, then they should be paid.
What do we do with other departments that have situations like this?
I think this.
Are we going to treat them all the same?
This department is pretty unique.
Andy.
Well, there's other departments that would have situations like that with Michelle.
So, Commissioner Knopf and commissioners, we do actually have some other departments that have a type of an on-call stipend or a callback stipend. And it's very specific to departments that are, in my terminology, safety-sensitive. So whether it's emergency management, or there's, you know, other callback procedures. So it is used across the county in different areas. It wouldn't make sense to put something in place like this for HR. You know, so with this, and having a specific period of time, we also would have time to evaluate it and see about it moving forward. The key, one of the key pieces for me was the fact that I push back all the time. Is it in your budget? We negotiated some things back and forth, but there is the opportunity, we already have some things in place for other departments. So, and there is some pieces that are involved with callback that's already documented that we are, that was there pre, pre-us, pre-HR being here, so. And yeah, it's been a lot of negotiating back and forth.
Departments?
So if another department needed it, they would have to develop a policy on how it worked for them. Because they have, we have some that are in place. Emergency management already has something that's been in place for.
But you use flex or something, don't you? Well, no, you would flex reviews because you're exempt. And then your staff.
There's, there's callback pay and things that she already has built into it.
Yeah.
And then social services, they, for their case managers, they have to take an on-call phone for a week, where between five PM and eight AM throughout the week, and on the weekends, they have to be available to take calls over the phone. And the state has, has that, that all detailed out, but they've had non-call stipend for a long time.
Well, this really helps with the problem. It puts a Band-Aid on it. But.
That's why I pursued that he had to have a Band-Aid.
I think the, I think the problem, where it helps the problem is, is it it sets up a list so that you know that there are people available to call back, yeah, and we have to have that. The correctional center has people's lives that they're, you know, they're taking care of those lives. So to be shorthanded is, is really unacceptable.
Yes. Commissioner Paul, members of the commission, to be shorthanded is a strict liability for all of us.
And I, I fully understand that. I agree. It's just like oh, I mean, there's so much turnover there, and it's like are we looking at what the true problem is? I mean, is there a true problem?
Commissioner Knopf, members of the commission, if you look at nationally, if you look at statewide corrections, it's not doing well. There are many agencies short, many more people than I. Last I checked with CAS, they were short over twenty hours. They have more than us, but they're still short. They don't have double what we have. They've been closing their facility for a period of time. Try to only over-approach and close away because they didn't have staff. It's a national issue that's hitting everywhere. I got publications all over my desk on different entities having the same issues. And it's actually, the American Jail Association has got a conference in Ohio in October, and the subject is retention recruitment of correctional officers. That's the main focus of the entire conference.
So why do we think, though, that next year it's going to be?
Not we have to do something.
Yes, I know that. But you said that it's for this, well, is it for this period, and then it's reevaluated, or, or but you made it sound like it was just for this period of time, and then.
We've got a sunset of that December thirty-first, and we can make a dent in this, but we're also doing other things as well in an attempt to have a more secure personnel group, ensure that they I know HR is looking at different ways of recruiting people in ways that they haven't in the past, and I believe that.
Retention with each other.
Yeah. Things like that, getting more people to, to work yours, because right now, we don't, we haven't figured out a lot of applicants until just recently. I mean, there would be times we'd have five applicants, of which we'd get interviews, and three of which one would show up. We have double-digit openings, and we have one applicant that we interviewed. You really don't have much of a choice whether or not they're the right fit or the wrong fit, because you have one person that and you hope that they're the right fit. We found that they have not been, and that's why, I don't know, why we keep losing more.
Well, it's just, I mean, we've got three departments right here. We've got, you know, detention, you're going to have, we have a large turnover as well. And the sheriff's office, yes, right, or not? Average?
Depends. We're full staff right now.
So, I don't know. It just I think retention and focusing on that would be key, as far as I'm concerned, and coming up with for me.
Mr. Green. Well, I think retention is a great idea, but in the meantime, this is probably going to boost morale a little bit. Wouldn't be so tough to be called in. It'll help you in the short run. There's a sunset time on it. I think it makes sense, and if the other departments need to do this too, depending on how it fits in their budget, they'll evaluate each one as it comes up, but I'll make a motion that we have policy, that fifteen and that sixteen, to the sunset from the thirty-first, subject to evaluation in prior to that time.
Second. Second by Commissioner Ross. And then, do we have any additional discussion on this? I do have one point. Yeah, I, I think it might help morality, some extra money or recognition by the department for employees going that extra mile for you. Yeah, I'll be available this weekend. I think that's good. But it's a two-pronged solution, so to speak. And I think the most critical thing is, is that it provides a list of manpower that's going to be available for you next weekend instead of you just hoping that that, you're going to be able to find somebody. I think you're going to have volunteers. They're going to fill those slots, so you're not running shorthanded. And once again, running shorthanded creates serious liability problems for us, and we don't want that. Well, I like it probably for that reason more than anything.
I think it will also, as was just mentioned, the morale. And you come to work, and you're running minimum staff, and when something happens, it's very stressful for the officers to know that they're going to come to work, that there's going to be sufficient staffing at all times at any state.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Peach, can you hear us today now?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you clear. We had some.
Wonderful.
Yeah, we had some problems of a previous meeting an hour ago, so it's great that you can time in. So do you have any comments or questions or anything?
No, I have none at this time. Thank you.
Okay.
Little comment. Sorry. But it would be really nice to have this information before our meeting. You know, I like to ask my questions, do my research, and it just seems like all too often, we get stuff at our meeting here, and you don't have time to read it. You don't have time to think about it. Try to come up with a solution, you know, talk to other people, and I just think that, you know, I mean, we have a rule that, you know, it has.
And I just think that, you know, I mean, we have a rule that, you know, it has to be in by X days before our mission meeting, as it should be, and we know that there's always gonna be an exception, you know, for those emergency kinds of things. But while this may be an emergency, it isn't like it's something we haven't known and haven't maybe been thinking about or talking about. And so I just think that. For me, and maybe not for the rest of you, but getting that information before meeting is, is crucial. If I have to make a decision on something. And so, right, that's where I'm coming from on it. And I will know because of that very reason. And so, not because it isn't good or you don't need it or it's not important. But for that reason is what I'm gonna do.
Okay, all in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. This Commissioner off. What's your pass? We'll see how it goes, keep us updated.
I will do that, I have one other thing.
Okay.
And then deals with safety and security of the exterior of our building. When I was hired with Grand Forks County, one of the things that was told to me, we don't have a fence anywhere around that building because it didn't want the appearance of, to be of a correctional facility. We have an individual coming up to one of the windows of one of the cells and communicating with an inmate. And this is being done at night. If the windows are rusted on the inside and it's scratched off frosting on the inside, the frost, the outside out, the individual, the outside's scratched off frosting on the outside. There are no signs around the property that say restricted area or anything like that. It's public, county-owned property. So I don't know if Haley would have, even if we called someone, if she could do anything about it in pressing charges.
Like it's criminal mischief that they're scratching up part of the building, but.
That's where, where that's from, Matt, can I, what do we do? Do we sign it? Cause I know the previous commission didn't want fencing around there anywhere anytime. But we need to have some teeth doing that for someone coming onto the property. And the other concern I have, and Andy could probably speak to this as well, the fact that the communications can be occurring that aren't recorded and/or written and copied, that could have an effect on law enforcement.
So are you talking about signs saying that no person is permitted within fifty feet of the building other than the front door, something like that?
You have that fire road that runs all the way around and we have probably fifteen no parking signs. But we have nothing that says no access to the grounds. And I don't know if that would be appropriate there. If you drive into the, the public parking lot, pod one is right there and I stepped it off, it's not more than seventy-five feet at most from the edge of the parking lot and you're at the cell windows. And there's nothing that would stop anyone from walking there.
Is this where your problem is occurring at cell one or is it? So that's near that parking lot, okay, Commissioner.
In the, in the, a similar situation, it's posting hunting line. There's no reason you couldn't, it might be, you could put signs everywhere you want, fifty feet or more from the building. I don't personally have a problem with having a fence at some point, but that's expensive. The signs would do the same job and no trespassing and to play them out there and they could be prosecuted, right?
Right.
Mister Chair members of the Commission, I think if signs were posted that were evident to folks coming onto the property, it potentially could be prosecuted. But one thing to consider is that's nearly a class B misdemeanor, which maybe would, affect the, the decision of some that may be coming on the properties. Any subsequent offense would then mean a class A misdemeanor.
Makes a start. And we, we don't wanna go fencing, for one thing, that's expensive and we're also gonna be changing a lot of things out there in the next few months and years, so. I think signs are appropriate to, to just figure out how to pay them, put them up.
That's. Mister West, sign crew could make something up.
We've already been talking about it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should have a motion on that.
And we'll just see, Correctional Center will be allowed to put appropriate signs on the property to prevent people from approaching the building of those.
One second.
Any further discussion?
And I would, if you put the signs up, I would make sure that there's some kind of lighting that's out there so they can see them at night. You know, cause a person could say, oh, I haven't seen it.
Commissioner Ross, members of the Commission, that's my exact thoughts, that public area has, we have over head lighting. Nice reflective signs there and as well as the fire roads, no matter where they would come from, there'd be no excuse, but okay. Just an FYI for you on why I consider this a security threat. It's a previous facility I worked at, we had a similar instance, but they weren't, they weren't just scratching out blazing out a window, they were actually using tools and got through the corners of the window and when, by the time we found it, the window was almost forty to fifty percent cut out. And inside the cellar, you're throwing chisels and hacks up. So that the fact that they have access to the building is not good.
No.
But the nice thing is these are smaller windows, you're not gonna get a body through there, but you can get.
Do you have any cameras around the building outside?
Yeah, we've got them on camera.
Oh.
Can't readily identify because it's coming in at night.
Let's, let's put up the signs and then we're sending the bill back to us and it sounds like it's capital movements.
Yeah.
You take care. Always somebody trying to hit beat the city.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we bought it, didn't we?
No.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Very good, thank you, thank you for reminding. Oh, yeah, juvenile detention. Hey.
Sorry, Larry, Lieutenant, the Detention Center speaking for.
I didn't look up, I followed.
I was hiding behind you. Hopefully there's a simple, we're, we're asking for five new part-timers from eleven to sixteen officers. Not necessarily for more hours, but it's hard to get people to work weekends and nights. And all three of us here from the detention there have done those and we are doing those. And full timers are also on weekends, so. Other than training, I don't see where it would necessarily cost anymore, but we might also make routine people longer. We're also losing people like Brett, so.
Yeah, I, I was briefed on this and, you know, I, this goes back to when Ms. Hanson was the administrator there too. She hired a lot of students from U N D that were available. Sometimes they can't work, it's, it's kinda hit and miss, but they're good employees part-time. But I think a bigger roster for them would make it much easier for them to keep a full staff there. It doesn't cost any more money to have these people available. Human resources, is there any issue there that you can see?
To be able to add. Um, there's their fault, to be able to add the additional head count that they're looking for, it's something that takes Commissioner approval. So I don't, we don't have any issues, we have some suggestions on working on scheduling and how you can maybe change up some scheduling, that might be helpful. But ultimately, if it's within his budget, or rather his budget, actually. And there's no huge issue on our part, it's just that we need to have, before we can put more head count into payroll, we've gotta be able to have the approval from the Commission. I just wanna say, as far as, you can ask more sex schedule on a weekend, I mean, that would be great, perfect for all the problems. You do have those U N U students and some of them are in a flight school, so they get flights scheduled last minute. So then they have to cancel their shifts, we're stuck trying to find somebody to replace them last minute, so.
Same thing, I remember years past. I like Sam's come around holidays, they take off behind you or they're not available because they're studying and then you're sure. I, it's, it's a good.
We're approving five new positions, wait, a motion, two motion, five new positions, but there's no compensation unless they're working.
Yeah, they, they'll just, they'll just fit them in the, in the ship, so it's not gonna cost anything extra in the department. It just gives them more flexibility to have somebody available.
They're all part-time, non-benefited.
Yeah.
Okay, so did we have a motion there? Do you wanna make the motion?
Sure. Second, part-time positions.
So, second, Commissioner Ross, any further discussions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both, most passes. Thank you, folks. Okay, county home rule charter. Are you busy, Mister West, or you don't care how long I sit here?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, all right, all right, whatever, whatever works for you. Sometimes we should take some of that stuff at the end and get our people out of here, but Mister West is accommodating. County Home Rule Charter is next. Chair members of the Commission. So the, the Home Rule Charter, Commission has provided a Home Rule Charter for the Commission's review and approval. Very, very quickly, the, the Charter before you space was based on multiple meetings over the last four or five months. Also based on one community talent hall event at Red River High School a month ago, two months ago. General feedback and then the survey, the countywide survey that, that happened in June through July. And so, based on, on the feedback and those discussions, the Home Rule Charter Commission is proposing two questions on the November ballot. The first question being, shall, shall the county adopt a Home Rule Charter government? Which really is, I like to describe as, it's, it's a local constitution. That would be the constitution between the counties, the government and the people of residents of the county. And then the second question would be, shall the county adapt, adopt a half-cent sales tax? And this would come in the form of an addendum to the Home Rule Charter, but it's still two questions. And it would be proposed in the addendum that the half-cent sales tax would be broken down as the following. Sixty percent would go towards capital building projects and it specifically lays out the county correctional facility addition, the new juvenile detention facility and, and a law enforcement center for the sheriff. And then twenty percent would go towards roads, culverts and bridges in, out in the county. And then twenty percent would go to property tax relief. That sales tax, as presented in the Charter, would sunset December thirty-first, twenty forty-eight. And so, wanted to give you just a little briefing on how the Home Rule Charter Commission came to its decision and why they're presenting the, the Home Rule Charter that you see before you today. So it's, it's now a commission decision on, on action with the Charter. Yeah, we're kind of up against the wall as far as getting on the ballot. Fair to say, Mister Ford is.
Did the early voting, the second September, Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, to have it in by the sixty-fourth day prior to the election, which is actually Labor Day.
Okay.
And because it's Labor Day, they tell Tuesday, the sixth, at four p.m.
Which would be our next meet, so we actually have to resolve this today.
Before that.
Yeah.
Before you.
Before four o'clock, that's right. I'm happy to answer any questions the Commission may have, but at this point, I think Mister Chair, you said it. Deadline's fast approaching and the Commission may wanna consider either acting on it today or setting a special meeting. Any comments? Yes.
I think we've all read this, the time of June, I want to, again, I don't see any improvements that need to be done. I, I think now's the time to move forward. And thanks to Chairman Paul, who, Chair Vice Chair Ross, for being on the Commission, to all the other people who run the committee and to Mister Ford and Gracie, who has helped with the administration. I think this project very well done and I'd like to see it go forward. I'll make the motion, or someone else can, but I don't think we should waste.
And I'll, I'll entertain a motion, but before we do though, I'd, I'd also like to thank myself, Mister Ross, that's part of our job, I guess. But, you know, I'd also, and I've said this before, thank Barry Wilford, who was on there, Robert Grease, Brendan Bonbach, Catherine Kestner, Kyle Farmy. And it was just an excellent group, I, I can't say enough about it as far as hardworking, provided a lot of information and I like working with them, so. I'll go back to you for the motion.
Move approval of the. Whether we accept the Charter that the Committee has put together and move to place it on the ballot for the liberal election.
Mister Chair, I second that motion.
Okay, we'll, we'll take the second from Miss Peach, thank you, you're coming in loud and clear. Do we have any other comments on it? I think we have to have a second motion on the ballot issue also, but we'll get to that. The addendum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was that part of this motion or?
Well, I think that's a separate, that'd be a separate one.
Three motions.
Two, then we'll cover the ballot issue, so, okay.
Uh, okay, yes.
I think, I'm going to vote no. And I'm sure that doesn't come as any surprise. And, and the main reason for that is, when we first talked about this and went into this, we were talking about the reason that we were going home rule and that was for the sales tax purpose only. And for the Correction Center and juvenile detention, that sort of thing. And I would like to see it be one question that included the tax. But I understand, you know, Lori, I think I have, we are going with wanting to have two questions. But it's two questions, I'm not gonna support it, so.
And just as a comment on that, both from the poll that was done and then the group of people that were involved in the Charter, all were convinced that it should be a two-question part of the ballot because some people indicated they may be in favor of home rule, but they may not be in favor of sales tax or vice versa. So it gives it the opportunity, if the Home Rule Charter should pass and the sales tax doesn't, you can still then adjust that rule and ask a separate question on that tax. That's why it was done.
My problem with that is I don't understand what, what home rule's gonna do us if it isn't for the tax. Cause we don't have a problem really with the state following, you know, under their rules, their guidelines. We are an arm of all of those entities at the state level. And, you know, we always talk about how good the state is to work with and whatnot. And, you know, that's just my, my premise on that. And again, I've been following the food fun business and I see what home rule didn't get them anywhere with respect to the public having a vote on anything.
Well, that's because it didn't legally follow.
Well, that's because it didn't legally follow the.
Well, because it was administrative and so, and a lot of people, the public think administrative, that gives the public. More opportunity to have input and say, and. That will break them in there, didn't. And I know that there were other things.
Yeah, it's happened on the state level, too, it's the the referendums have been turned down because of signature problems, whatever, so it's not. Marijuana, it's not a unique problem, they really need to go to a good legal council before they start and then it probably couldn't be successful. All right, any further discussion? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify the motion that has the November eighth, twenty twenty two election that we're placing on the ballot?
Right, right.
Yeah, well, that that would be the second motion.
Or that's part of this. Yeah. Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
We should not oppose, okay, then the the addendum we need to address separately.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the addendum to the Grand Forks County Home Rule Charter. Which would establish half since sales tax. Sixty percent would go to financing, renovation, construction, acquisition, maintenance, infrastructure, needs of Grand Forks County. Including correctional center, juvenile detention and law enforcement center, twenty percent to property tax relief. And twenty percent to the Grand Forks County roads, bridges, culverts and providing for a sunset clause of December thirty first, twenty forty eight.
And to be on the ballot on November eighth.
Yeah, to be on the ballot on November eighth.
Is that for you, Ms. Nelson?
Mr. Chair, I would second that motion.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Peach, we got the second. Or any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor of the addendum being on the ballot. This fall signify by saying yes.
Aye.
Arrived. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, Commissioner Ross? Thank you. County engineer, Mr. West, we're going to finally get you.
Thank you, Chairman Ford, for considering my time earlier, I was going to stick around for this discussion anyway, so.
Well, you know, if you know, I we know you've got more problems than a math book, so. If you if you see it your way down on the agenda, you can always ask me, you had to make it go back to work, so. We appreciate you, the time you're putting in.
Well, thank you. That fine future. Couple items for consideration, first would be. Certification of our township road mile, just something the counties, every county needs to do, every even numbered here. This would be twenty twenty two, this year would be one year. We certify all. Regular maintained miles and minimum maintenance miles for the state, and then they use that for distribution of. Highway tax fund or state gas tax funds to be used for townships and also is used when they disperse. I call it surge dollars or oil money, oil tax revenue, when they give shots of money to townships, one way to disperse it is. Either it's dollars per township or. Per mile of certified miles, that's a common way that they. I'm just for the board's recollection in twenty eighteen, we did a very significant update to our system and. Re-looked at every township. And updated that, we did boost a number of miles, there were some miles out there that was being claimed that. Were not appropriate and we're all updated and adjusted and I would. Ask for chairman's signature approval on the board. This did not change from twenty five, it was the same.
So, so one thousand five hundred and eighty five. Miles of township roads that we maintain. Or they, we don't necessarily maintain them, but they're out there.
Correct.
Okay, so what is it that we would maintain? Do you have that figured?
Well, it would be that, it would be.
We don't do it for all townships.
One township we don't.
Okay.
Minimum maintenance roads are included, so you look sometimes.
Correct. So really, the only significant difference between a regular, I just call it a regular maintained road and minimum maintenance. Is we get up on the snow, that's the bottom line, however, there is, when you drive around, oh, there there is a vast difference in the quality of a minimum maintenance road. Some, you drive today, you know, a nice August sunny day. You can't tell the difference between a minimum maintenance road and a regular road, and some of them are. Black dirt. Trails that we lay them a few times a year, but they're our claim as minimum maintenance, because they are graded a few times a year.
This is a routine that. Question I have, because I get asked that, so county road miles are how many?
Oh, five hundred and sixty five. This is all, say five hundred and sixty five approximately.
So roughly then the county maintains almost twelve hundred. Miles of county township road. I'm just curious. Well, they don't know.
Well, no, no idea. Twenty one, twenty two hundred.
Pardon?
Yeah, it's actually quite.
Yeah, fifteen hundred miles of township plus five hundred some county.
I think I told you I want to action.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, thank you. Yeah.
So can we get a motion to approve and certify the township mileage and for the chair's signature?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of that motion.
Very much. We have a motion from Commissioner Peach, second from Commissioner Knopf, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, Mr. West.
Thank you. You have a form. All cited. It's not a future, I can get that next couple days here. The next item, bridge program. The DOT take and they they give them a take, right, so. It's kind of a joke, a couple weeks ago, I got a. Email like I normally do from the DOT that we had thirteen bridges that we needed to post on, on the time. And it seems they used to do it once a year, they'd send me an email, now it's every month. And it's it's harsh, these new requirements that they have are very challenging. Of the thirteen bridges we got for August, when they say. Six were already posted, so there would just be a lower posting and seven would be doing it for our county roads. We used to be able to break, we didn't have a single posting on a county road, now we will. However, I am working with. K O J structural engineers on solutions to reduce, especially our county roads, trying to get those taken care of. We just spent all day going around with one of them today. I got copies of the model from the DOT engineers. And the load rating reports, share that with the K O J guys, and we went around and tried to get together plans of how we can fix them up, and good news is. I think we can. Most of these, there's the county road ones, I think we can do some modifications, rehab work to them, to get the ratings back up. There's one in particular is very concerning, County Road eleven, just a half mile east of County, or County eleven. A half mile east of city, it came. Two years ago, when it was looked at, it was a forty two ton bridge, I, looks good, great, now there's ten of those five tons. I got that notification beginning of the month, we have to post it or have it fixed and reevaluated by the end of the month. It's not going to all be completely done by the end of the month, that portion's going to have to go up, so. It's a little scary politically to put up a five ton bridge on a county road like that, but we don't really have a choice. It's, we we can go under and we can add some diaphragms, cross bracing, weld some other beams underneath to beef it up, and I think we'll be okay. It's just a matter of timing, and I need to find a, call it a super truck, I need to find one. That's, the truck sits on top of the bridge, the arm was out, down and under, so we can get staff under there. Because it's on the Turtle River and you can't just put the ladder and walk up and do your work, so. It all takes time and I need to develop a plan, procure materials. Do it all, so that's just kind of the way the year's going here, but. That's just a tidbit for the board. We're working on it. And then just last week, I get a a good email from the DOT that we got ten major structures. Have one needing to replace or do something with, so great news. Her call is, is they want some of that constructed in twenty twenty three. That's that's almost impossible, I'll say, very difficult. Because the challenge is not to design and bid the project, the challenge is getting the environmental field worked out. And by the time we. A little liberty, and I issued the RFP. Right away to save time, and these projects, to my knowledge, are a hundred percent federally funded, so there's no county dollars involved, which is very rare, that's something new. Issue an RFP, we have to select a consultant, negotiate, so open fee, contract is three, three ways, consultant. U T county, that takes time. And they got to get, you know, their archaeologists, biologists, altered to the linac wetlands and whatnot before it still flies, that's the time crunch, and that's what I was really worried about. And I hope the boards aren't too mad with me. I I I did that. Keep things going, if the board's upset, we can always resend and send the money back, which I hope we don't do that, but. What what the. The plan was, well, I submitted fifteen applications, got ten of them accepted, which is really good. There's four structures would be considered for twenty twenty three and six structures considered for twenty twenty four. And the, I I did call the DOT, and like your timeline is too tight, it's really tough, and they said, well, the issue is they have the money now, they won't spend it. And took a while for them to get their approvals and what projects were selected and their criteria for selecting. And the worry is, is that projects they want done in twenty three, if they don't get done in twenty three, they get done in twenty four. Along with the projects that are done, I normally plan for twenty four, so you're doubling up and it's a worried about industry having capacity to do the work, so whatever we can squeeze in in twenty three. They want to do. Now, I was visiting with Cass County, they just did a box culvert in July, they won't get the culvert till August of twenty three. That's how backed up these guys are now with fox culvers, so. I don't know how, we have bridge one twenty seven oh one, that's Lebat Township, section four nine. I don't know how we're going to get that built next year, because I, optimistically, we did the sucker in. Excuse me, we did the structure in November. Maybe we get it in October next year, you know, it, thank you. I don't know how that's going to work, but. Want to. Plug through as best you can and see what we can get done, because these are a hundred percent federally funded.
Yeah.
Just for the board's. Knowledge, so there's a couple goofy things going on here that might might have questions on, so like Agnes twenty seven thirty four. Those two bridges are right next to each other, a few hundred feet apart, for the life of me, I can't figure out why they're back close together. They are, we don't need two bridges there. We've already, matter of fact, the grant projects we did last year. Replace the ones mile upstream and the one two mile downstream, but they were just a double box culvert, so. So that's where it's when it says removal, and we just put in a culvert, you know, something a medium size, like sixty inch, something like that is what would be appropriate. That's what's going on there, and Grace Township, they got more there, so yeah, Grace Township is looking really good. It's done a lot of box culverts since I've been here, but that's the way that cookie comes. The ones for twenty twenty three. So, the one and PR is Turtle River, Turtle River thirty five ferry two. That one, my proposal is take it out, but not be back, and it's own odd, but it is on. Not even a male made control. Dirt trail. Does not need to be there, it's not used, I talked to the township, I talked to the adjacent landlord, they're okay with it. I would. If anybody has a question, I would invite a trip out there to see where this thing is at. Matter of fact, the landlord was. Think, well, when it's dry, I use it once in a while, but anytime you get any rain, you can't drive it on the road anyway, and. All you get is a bunch of tough trucks and four wheelers out there ripping it up, and if the bridge was gone, it'd be nice, so. That's my proposal, and then the other two and ferry township. Those are old metal, well, the one that removed, those last three and ferry are. Pony trust, metal trust bridges. Two, the bottom two, I would propose a little water crossing. So what that means is the bridge comes out, put a smaller culvert in, and then you pave the road going down. When you get a bigger rain, water just goes through the road. And those bridges, when you get a big flood anyway, they are closed and water's over the bridge anyway, so from a functional standpoint, it's. We're not taking much away, but then they can drive a large equipment through it, and the township guys were very happy to hear about that, so. So I would be. Be asking for approval for the grant. And then also with that RFP that Grant who got to replace the bridge on county five. I included that in our RFP too, we may as well take that off, so. I would ask approval for for that.
Thank you for the update. Anybody willing to make the request of motion? Yes, Commissioner. To accept the grant with its timeline and schedule of structures and to advertise an RFP for ensuring services for these projects, that.
And that starts now, or it's already started.
Second, correct. We're rolling. Yeah. I don't fault you at all, I mean, we're hard up against the wall on a timeline here, so.
Well, there's no money involved.
No.
For no loss for us, and if, you know, but if you didn't approve it, we would. We can't stop it.
This is something that's going to have to be done, plus it's money that's available for us, so we.
A hundred percent.
Foolish not to accept this, so.
Correct.
So we have the motion from Commissioner, Commissioner Ross, we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Question on those low water places? Yes. Since we're not raising them and they're still, how do you, what happens in big rains or. Somehow, people just have to know in the area that you.
Oh. Yeah, we put up permanent signs, they say, do not enter when flooded. There's two signs that go up. We have, there's a few examples in the county already, do not enter when flooded and. Put a speed limit on them, because they're, you know, quicker. And one, I I forgot off the top of my head. But yes, usually between us and the township, when a big flood comes, it would be blocked off, or, yeah.
And your county has also. And your county has also. The sixty second avenue brick grant was, at this time denied.
It was, yes. We did not get the grant. Oh, no, that, I got the list of the projects that were submitted through the state. Seven hundred and eighty-eight total projects were submitted, fifty-four were selected nationwide. No projects were selected in North Dakota. Um, and visiting with the Department of Emergency Services guys, they mentioned something. An issue with their state building codes, that. FEMA doesn't like. And I don't even wanna try to get into the issue here, I know I would butcher that, and on the record. Uh, I wouldn't get it right, so I'll just leave it at that. And because of that, they feel that. North Dakota is gonna have a tough time competing at that level, because when they have all these different criteria and they score the grants and the points. I guess in my mind, what I would consider, a category that should almost give you points, we score a low. So the future of the brick program in North Dakota is, in my opinion, shaky at the moment. Historically, we have gotten success in that, I'm sure. You would get one or two projects here, so we had a pretty fair chance if it was. Five or ten projects submitted throughout the state, so. I don't, I don't know what to really, what to really do with this project. Still a worthy project, in my opinion.
You can still reapply, right?
Yeah, I think it was just a few options I thought of, was four options. One, we could just reapply again next year. As if they used to take the same grant, hit repeat or resend. Two, we could hire a consultant to help us do more work on the grant. And that was one item that, as we're working through with the guys on this market, like, well, it'd be nice to have a little more detailed drawings and such. A little better cost estimate, things that would take significant time, but we would need to hire help on that. I'm gonna step all thirty thousand to do that, that would be a common cost. The other option that we would have a fair chance of getting is the brick program does have what's called a project scolding graph. So you apply for. You get a grant to do. Most scolded project. Where you can put together some of those more detailed things, and then that gets used towards the actual construction graph. Uh, however, there's still as a county share for that, too, so, and we would, uh, need to hire a consultant to do that. But again, if we don't have a decent chance of getting a construction grant, I'm not sure really what the point is at this time. To just be frank, to put that right on the table.
For the scoping grant?
Yeah, I mean, there's a fair chance we'd get that, but the intent is to lead up to the construction grabs, you know, actually, how can you pay that?
You can't get two grants of scoping and the construction, and you're saying we have a fair chance of scoping, but we're still having to hurdle with the construction grant.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I know Department of Emergency Services is aware of the problem. They've had some discussions with state legislatures and Department of Commerce who works on the building codes. I don't know what the status is, or what the chances of getting those changed, or really what the detailed issues are. Why the building codes are being modified to a point where FEMA doesn't like them.
You know.
Wouldn't mind seeing us get a better application, but to me, it sounds like you could have the best application the state's ever put forward. It's not gonna be approved if they don't like the way we're doing business, and that's what it sounds like. So my question is, is the state doing anything to try to get along better with FEMA needs? Or are they just accepting that they're not gonna get any money from it?
Commissioner, well, I can't, I don't know.
Okay, maybe question to ask, but.
I know Emergency Services is aware of it, and they are working with. And having conversations with the building code folks. Yeah, and we don't have to make a decision now. I just bring this to your attention, I just found out here a couple weeks ago. To reapply this in January, so worst case scenario, come January, we can just sit resend.
So if they. They look at. Uh, the construction grant, we didn't get it. What if we did the scope grant? Which almost sounds like a prerequisite for the construction. You know, maybe they would look at it if we got approved for the scope grant.
Well, there, North Dakota has, did or did get a, a few, four. By scoping grants. One in Grand Forks, or some sanitary sewer. Or was storm sewer project they have issued? Be interesting to see, once they get that. How that fares on the construction side, if that weaves in well or not.
And if it doesn't, then that's more money in the shredder.
And there were some of the other applications in the state, well, including the city of Northwood. Hired a consultant to do some pretty more detailed applications, and they were still unsuccessful.
The expensive result, too. Engineers done the whole project. The grant that just turned down, and this money just just gone.
Well, if anybody's got a different plan, I think for the time being, we should look at reapplying at January twenty twenty-three. Look at that scoping grant, if we decide that's the way to go.
They're getting tired of us playing.
In the meantime, I'll, I'll keep reaching out to the state and see if, if, you know, any, any more comes of the. Building code issues. If that can change and open up the avenue a little more of it.
I don't think if you get Mr. West can simply reapply.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
County Office Building Parking. Sorry, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair members of the commission. Give Mr. Clement the night off, so he's not here, but, uh, you recall, he presented some of the findings from the structural study. Uh, and I know, uh, the commission wanted to discuss that again tonight, but just to recap, that study. Two point four million in initial immediate repairs to be spread from, uh, through years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five. To also encompass a twenty-year repair plan with a total cost of five point one million. Those costs go into structural, electrical, drainage, security, and, and maintenance. And I, I think, Mr. Chair. It was intended for the board to discuss exactly what to do moving forward. Hearing Mr. Cleveland, one way or another, uh, the initial repairs probably need to start sooner than later, if that's what the board wishes to do, or. Uh, or I do have Commissioner Moll on speed dial for decision. Comments from any commissioners? A couple of thoughts on, on that auction. And I, I've stressed to the commission before, that others concerned staff has that that ramp is safety aspect of it. And then it, it is an issue, but Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman had asked. Me to report back what the usage was, um, from what I garnered. But two hundred and four spaces are leased, that includes employees. Fleet, so Northeast Human Services Fleet, Social Services Fleet, uh, and some public health. Uh, and then we have some tenants, uh, and what I mean by that is like downtown residents. So we do have residents in the apartments around the county that rent some spaces. In the ramp, and then of course, there's, I believe, eleven or twelve dedicated solely to, to handicap. So, one, one, one option that, that been kicking around on the sixth floor in the last two weeks is if the commission was to, to. Consider demo. Have to, have to find a short-term solution for the parking, then a long-term solution for the parking. Keeping that in mind, uh, communicating with some of our fleet that they might have to look at corporate ramp. Obviously, until a long range, a long-term solution is, is, is provided. Um, I know that there's been discussion that when the old juvenile detention center. Uh, is demoed, that could be a space for parking. Um, I have had a couple of discussions with Mr. Phelan. Uh, about that lodge, if you recall, uh, prior to COVID, the commission was discussing buying that lot from the city and building there. The city is still interested in, would, would be interested in selling that to the county. Um, at a fair price to be negotiated, but that, that could be an option, too, to put the flat surface there. Be much cheaper, uh, at the end of the day, be much cheaper and more cost effective for, for flat surface parking. And then the other thing I would just issue, I would just bring up with the commission is whichever route the commission wants to go. To seriously consider pay for parking moving forward to help with the ongoing maintenance. Of whichever route the commission wants to go, so just putting that out there, commission. So ma'am, um, I had some good discussions with staff and department heads. Right now, the third level is free. And, and there's employees that park on the third level, and then you have the first and second level, you, you pay to park. And so really what's happening is the cost right now that goes into the parking round. The employees parking on the first and second, tenants paying, they're shouldering the repair cost, maintenance cost. While those who choose to park on the third level, uh, uh, don't have to contribute, for lack of a better word. So there's many areas, I, I started to have Ms. Leon start looking into that with the city. And then when this discussion came up, I told her just to pause, cause it would not be a good use of time at this point, but. Before COVID started, I was visiting with the city about the possibility of piggybacking on their, um. For parking, the university uses it going on their system, so that you could, our ramp would be the first two hours free. And then if you don't have a pass, it's, I don't know. Eight dollars an hour after that, you utilize that for a passport parking system. Uh, another, uh, example could be if you want just Monday through Friday. Uh, seven to six, let's just say it's forty dollars a month. If you want twenty-four seven, it's sixty dollars a month. If you just wanna park on the third level, it's twenty dollars a month, because it's not. These are just raw examples I'm throwing out there to, to answer your questions, so.
Can you talk about passport? System, so is that where there's a lever that goes up and, I mean, when you drive up?
So what it is, ma'am?
How does that work?
You know it pretty well. Putting, putting her on the spot.
Cause you're not, there was an admission, so passport parking, it's an app on your phone. And so that, I think, can be a little difficult for those who don't have a smartphone, don't use apps, but it is something that is used across. Many cities, I was in Minneapolis over the weekend, and, um, the app that I can use here in Grand Forks. University campus or City of Grand Forks is exactly math is when you're parking there in their downtown. What it is, is you register your car on it, you put in a credit card payment. And then you type in like a zone, so each parking area is zoned. So you and he have different zones, uh, City of Grand Forks does. And then you will type in the parking space of the zone, if that's what it prompts you to do, or maybe it's just the zone itself. But then you will indicate how long you wish to park in that area, so if it's. Like Mr. Ford said, if the first shower is free, you still sign in through the app to. Let, you know, parking services know enough to get you, but then after that, you can extend it. I think the city of Grand Forks, it's relatively cheap, uh, maybe two dollars, then four dollars, then eight dollars. If you were to be there for more than six hours. And then you can extend it as long as you want up through the phone, or you can leave before that charge's left, so you don't get charged anything, and then you can abort it.
Yeah. You need an attendant, though, I imagine, because there's a whole lot of people who would not use that app like that.
There's signs, you put up signs.
Meaning what?
So, when you go into the ramp, it'll say passport parking zone. Right through the hundred.
Is there also someone who doesn't have a pass, doesn't have a phone? And wants to park in there, can they pay cash to, uh, to attend them, that we have to then hire?
That's a great question, Commissioner, and I, I don't know. And again, these are just throwing them out for the commission. Just the point I'm trying to make is, whatever decision is made, I would implore the commission. Seriously consider looking at paid apart going, going forward. The, and Ms. Leon started looking into all that, and then this came up, and I went. Let's wait to see what the commission wants to do, so.
So the paid apart is when. You do that, as you come there, or a monthly charge, or?
So a good example, Commissioner, uh, all that would be, say, uh, 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 social services client comes for a meeting, they're here for an hour, they don't pay. But if, if someone comes downtown, um, and they're gonna be here, we, we'd wanna work with the court admin. I wouldn't wanna charge jurors to park here for doing civic duty. But if you're gonna be here longer than two hours doing business, if you're coming downtown, you're gonna be here for four hours to do business, and you're parking in the ramp, you're gonna pay. Two dollars, uh, the first job or.
Monitor is that?
Um, it, well, right now, and the sheriff's in here, but it, it would be monitored by the sheriff's department, who. Who right now goes to the ramp, patrols the ramp. Um, and I, again, that's a discussion way down the road, you'd have to have with, uh, the sheriff, but.
I don't think that's gonna work.
No, that's gonna be another employee. These are, these are discussions to have twelve months down the road, there's things here that.
This is if we keep the rent.
I, I would.
But flat parking, what happened?
Correct, correct, if you, if you keep, if you keep the ramp, if, if employees want reserved spots, I still consider, I was just gonna say. Charging something for a reserved spot to go towards maintenance on the parking lots.
We charge for the lot across the street. It's cheaper. How's that charge?
And the employees pay it. There's, there's not too many, there's a couple, three, there's their spots, there's law enforcement spots.
Handicap.
Handicap spots. It's a way to subsidize the cost of maintenance.
But even if we start doing the pay for parking, it's not gonna come close to five million bucks.
No, sir. No, sir.
My question is, we have two hundred and four spaces that are leased now, and so how many spaces are actually in that?
In that, in the ramp right now, ma'am, uh, about three hundred and thirty. And I, 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 I have noticed since we came out of the dark, dark days of COVID. That little ramp isn't utilized as much, but I, I point that to, you know, northeast, twenty-five percent of their. Workers are remote now, but I think some of them kept them for the, when they come in to do some off-site work, I think. The same could be said about human services zone, but honestly, when we were first looking at this pre-COVID. The drop between, the drop between two years ago and today is not significant in, in leased parking. Spot, so it's, it's still utilized, but two hundred and four out of three thirty total spots.
Cause I think we're probably gonna see more people going remote. I know, based on a conversation I had last week. Within this building, and, um. You know, it's that one, it's a difference there as well, and it could be.
No, it just, it would, in, in snow removal and general maintenance is very difficult and expensive with, with the ramp as well. Yes.
Question about, say we go to flat parking, we want to be able to. Have parking for most of the employees, so they don't have to walk too far, and we have a lot of visitors here as well. I know we're talking about the various flat lots around here, but doesn't seem to me that there's any really large spaces close. What's, how's that gonna affect all of it?
It would be somewhat short. Question is, you're on, you're weighing that against five million dollars, I guess.
Yeah, of course, we have the, the ramp over.
Yeah.
Corporate ramp.
I think we have some parking south of the old Deacon.
Yes, we have that by the church over there, you have that, and then you have a lot of staff that.
Lot of staff that park on Third Street, all the way down to almost where the old post office used to be. And then you have, I mean, you go to the second floor on that ramp and. Space, I mean, most of it is just lease cars. And you go to third floor and there isn't really, other than court days, not much there. And so.
Just forgot about, that's a good thing, that poses a significant problem, because sometimes that puts eighty to a hundred cars down here.
Yeah, but there again. If we could take out the juvenile detention center, we have.
And buy that lot.
And well, buy that lot or just even the lot behind or where Julie sits now, I mean, we could get. Probably three rows of cars.
You have to keep in mind, we may at some point also have the sheriff's cars all over here too, which right now they're over in the city lot. I mean, there are, there are multiple problems, we're never gonna figure out tonight.
Well, we're never gonna have enough spaces for everyone.
Well, I think, you know, the question that pops into my mind kind of constantly is what would it cost to take that ramp down? And I think maybe that's what we need to look at.
Yeah.
And then we have some ideas, that's a big number, then you just decide, well, maybe that isn't that bad. Our cost to keep it going, you know, the two and a half million over twenty years, I can kind of see that, but this two and a half million dollar initial.
That's tough.
Check right on it, I have hard time with that one, so.
They don't even know. Based on what they can see at this point is all they're basing that figure.
Right.
You know, when they get into the guts of it and pulling some of that concrete out or getting into the inner workings of that, my guess is you're gonna see.
Yeah, I think he indicated he was, didn't think that was probably gonna happen, he could, engineers can kind of tell based on where the. Where the problems are. So I think we have to go a little bit on what, a lot on what our engineers are telling us, but I, you know, what do we have to do, do we need to get? Or engineer back here to come up with a proposal to find out how much it's gonna cost.
And put in flat lot, Mr.
Oh, yeah, which that lot could be kind of damaged by taking it down, that's a problem, it's got. Mr. Chair, I can had estimated. To demolish the juvenile detention, the old jail was around three hundred and thirty thousand. Which I I'm gonna assume it would cause more for the ramp, but I don't think it would be an extreme amount more. Maybe half, half a million, five hundred thousand.
There's a lot to follow away that we.
There was a, there was a large, large chunk of concrete, the director of administration, one morning called and sick. And if he wouldn't have a large chunk of concrete, would have gone through either his windshield or on his head, so we, there's issues. But there's issues identified by the engineer.
Big issues in that.
Workman's comp, we avoided a workman's comp claim with human resources that day. Can we have Mr. Ford contact our engineer? And see what, if he can come up with a number for us or if he has to come back to us, they need to have some kind of a. Request for proposal, whatever, we need to get to be honest, find out what it will cost to take that down. The the old jail, you know, the city's been after us for some time, we know that, that. Take care of that problem and that actually I think is in the, right now, I remember I'd asked that that be included in. In our overall cost and then building out there to clean that up also. We'll see, okay. Anything more on the ramp? Moving forwards with somewhat of a plan, Mr. Ford is next with Miller Dunwitty, Dunwitty. Yes, sir, so this is the contract for architectural services between the county and Miller Dunwitty. Two weeks ago, the commission had accepted their proposal to provide architectural services in pertaining to the repair of the courthouse dome. This, this was an interesting animal because we had to find an architecture firm who has experience in historical restoration and preservation. Two entities were identified to Mr. Kraszewski, Miller Dunwitty was the only of the two entities that responded. Anyway, so this is the contract for services, I think the total was forty, I wrote it down, forty thousand. Ten dollars. If the, if the commission, I'm sorry, forty eight thousand, ten dollars, if the commission was to approve it. They're estimating a two to three month turnaround to do the assessment, to come up with a plan to make the necessary repairs. Assessment. I don't know what the actual rehab, but assessment. They could start, they they indicated they could start even this month and it would take about three months to to come up with a plan, an architectural plan. Oh, thank you. This one other item. That Ms. Leon just reminded me of, gosh, Ms. Leon's been working on a a state, a state historical preservation grant for this project. However, comma, she found out that in order to get the grants, which we're talking, we're talking twenty five thousand at the most. It would be a planning grant for this, this assessment. Work cannot start until the grant's been applied for and awarded. So it is, it is, it's staff's recommendation not to delay this. However, I I thought prudent for the commission to know this and weigh it on it, if you go for the grant, this would have to be delayed. And it's not guaranteed the county would get the grant either, so.
You know, I. Since the one and a half dozen of another, in my mind, if we wait to try to get that twenty five thousand dollar grant, my assessment is we're having. More than twenty five thousand dollars of damage occurring over there because water is continuing to run into that building, so. We're gonna have a mold problem, structural problem, whatever, so I I think we have. ASAP. So can we have a motion to approve the contract with Miller Gunway for an assessment? I would make that motion.
I would second that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Peach, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? County Home Rule Charter Community Forum, this is actually something Ms. Leon's gonna provide a. Briefing and a recap to the commission, we wanted to hold off on this until the charter was acted on, Mr. Chair, so I'm gonna turn it over to. Ms. Leon for this item.
Chair and members of the commission, so a key piece to putting these two items on the ballot. Will be informing the public on what they mean and having those conversations. I think that from past attempts at home rule, it was clear that there was not a lot of great communication to the community and that's how they failed. On the ballot then, we've been working on scheduling town halls and informational meetings and the surrounding communities. That are then paired with announcements, local papers, base of pages, so that some of the other happening. So far, what we have scheduled, there's one on Thursday, on the eighteenth. At six thirty in Emmerito with their Lions Club. There's another next Tuesday, which is the twenty third at seven thirty in Northwood. And then we also have one scheduled at this moment in Laramore on Wednesday, September seventh at six thirty at their elementary school. We've contacted Gilby and Thompson, but it'll be a year back, we're working towards probably another Grand Forks year or two. A township meeting was suggested by some others which we're going to work on. And then I know that a commissioner, I believe it was Commissioner Ross, who mentioned Mandel at one point. But I couldn't find any contact information for anyone at that, so if anyone has any recommendations on that, greatly appreciate it. But like I said, with those scheduled town halls, we're noticing them. Sending out information, whether that be in their local newspaper. Or on the Facebook pages, so that people can come and ask questions and make an informed decision, that comes time to vote. Other ways that we are getting information out to the public right now are through social media posts such as Facebook with infographics. Developing that, speaking with community groups, I know the commissioners have talked to a few different groups. And then I know there's a few other, others being scheduled. Media appearances and information sharing, media outlets, you know, Commissioner Ross has already been on Grand Forks best source, talking about a few things. And then potentially looking at creating some videos for sharing online, quick facts. Letter to the editors, op-eds, and then the Home Rule Charter Commission is recommending. That the county send another mailer to Grand Forks county households, which would ensure that. They're informed, we would want to send this if the commission wants to pursue that, before the voters. Can do absentee ballots to combat misinformation, the cost would be similar to what the previous mailer was, at about eight thousand two hundred dollars. And I'm working appealing, making sure that the draft language on that doesn't violate any laws, it would be purely informational and. Town citizens where they can get more information, where they can ask questions. And so then if you were to grant approval on pursuing that, we would move forward so that we can send it. Probably in the middle of September, I believe, that absentee ballots. For overseas can start being requested on the twenty third of September, in town, I believe it's the twenty ninth is when absentee. Voting begins in September and then early voting is November first, it's November sixth, so we haven't approved it yet.
Oh.
That's where you're going, so with voting deadlines are coming up on that.
I have the Mandel city contacts on the, it's on our website.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
If you remember, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ross, the the postcard that was suggested at the the last, the final. Home Rule Charter Commission meeting, just to get into every county household again, just to give them kind of the facts and the. Here's what it means, here's why we're doing it. As of course, the commission. Hey, any other questions from the commissioners?
Do you are? Willing to come out to organizations and speak on this?
Yes, absolutely, I I think it's, I absolutely are, I am willing to. Commissioner Ian and I have spoken to the EDC board. We spoke in, Commissioner Falcone has spoken with city leadership, we're visiting with the Emmerito Lions Club this week. I'll myself and I have to follow up with Commissioners Falcone Ross, I'll be visiting with the chamber board next week. I know, I think Commissioner Ross indicated Optimist Club, but yes, yes ma'am, absolutely, I think the. The more county officials are out visiting and explaining. What the home rule is, what it provides, but more importantly, and and Gracie indicated it. There's, there's a lot of misunderstanding, lack of understanding and misperception. Of it going around and 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 the more county officials are out there explaining it, the the better it is, so. With with today's action by the commission, as a sprinter in college, the the starting gun's gone off, so now I think it's a. Dead sprint to the finish line to get out, letters to the editors, as much as county officials can do. To tell people.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with home rule, you would come to one, my clubs and.
That man, let me know when.
Going to your club already.
Well, have you gone to them already?
Brad has already. Yes. Brad has already gotten me on some.
Okay, well, then we're good to go.
No, and the other thing is, I think we were already at the chamber, you and I. Yes, sir, the Business Government Education Alliance Committee, yes, but this, the next one's the actual chamber board, so.
Okay.
We had asked for the EDC for some support, we've asked for the chamber board for for support, but yes, you're right, that was a chamber committee brief. And what we've been doing is with all these public engagements that were getting set up and. Kind of press floor but getting set up, because it's so difficult, there's five commissioners, it'd be very difficult to get five schedules lined up. We've been prioritizing Commissioner Fulton Ross' schedules because they were the co-chairs of the. Home Rule Charter Commission, get that set and let the entire board know when it is and hope that the entire board can can participate.
And I think we've also invited members of the Charter Commission to attend to these.
Yes. I'd almost go as Mr. Chair as as asking the commission if it's their wish to. Work a form print on an on an on another postcard to be sent out, we we know what that's roughly gonna cost us, the commission so choose to do. Ms. Leon's got a draft, so maybe she did say, yeah.
We need a motion for that, because I think that's one of the critical things. If this political season is coming up, we're gonna be inundated with flyers in our railboxes. But if we don't put this out again, it's gonna get lost in the shuffle, so I I think that'll be worth the money.
I, well, Commissioner Ross and I are talking here just between us, but I think it would be good to see it in advance and also know the cost of it. So maybe we can have a.
And do that.
Just have a question, so the first time postcard went out, did that go to everybody?
It went to thirty thousand households, yes. Every, every.
I never got one.
Really, it was supposed to go to every household.
I waited for it, but I never bought it.
It's supposed to, it was supposed to, and it was eighty two hundred dollars that time around, so I I don't see why it would be any different this time.
And I'm just, my, my point in even bringing that up is, I mean, I don't need the postcard because I, I know. And I knew what was coming and I know what it's about, but how many other people were like me, sitting out there that never bought it? And so that, that's my only point in bringing that up is if if you thought it weren't everybody, it's.
I'm sorry, did the, who did the every door direct, direct mail?
We utilized form print.
Well, yeah, then you gotta, you have to go to the.
They go into the post office for a.
Barcodes for each of the. Resincs and so on, so you can, did that for the whole county?
Yes, sir, that's what we requested. I I think the problem is, when you have thirty thousand, you're gonna find something, that's just the way it's gonna be. You're never gonna be able to back check or it would be just costly to do that. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the last thing I just want to mention is. You should, you all should have received an invitation from the chamber. For the the Testing Resource Management Center, TRMC ribbon cutting event on Grand Sky, August twenty fourth. If you didn't, please let me know. Same with a topping off ceremony from Ultra, you should have received an invitation from them for that, if you didn't, please let me know.
I don't think that. The one for the topping off.
Yes, I did, after we talked about it, I looked and it was on my email.
The TRMC, that's, that's the one I emailed the board about, that's the big one, that's for the raindrop program. Where all the global locks are now to be operated on a grand sky. So if you didn't get.
That's the twenty four.
August twenty fourth, ma'am.
So there's several things going on that day that, I mean, it's all day things, so are we just for the. The dedication or the speaking that.
There's, there's, so there, right now, it's the the actual start times changes twice a week. I'm, I would, I blocked out one thirty on. So the first event, Commissioner Knopf, is the ribbon cutting on the Grand Sky with with the with the TRMC director.
Meeting and then there's a social.
And then after that, there's a community event that Minco of Power.
Yeah.
Yep, and then I believe there's a social that you would be invited to with TRMC leadership, so.
Can you resend that out, Mr. Ford?
Yes, I I will just, I'll just resend the invitation to the entire board.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Falcone, I believe you're making remarks at both.
Yes. It'll be brief.
Okay, state's attorney.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I do have a brief update on the void litigation. If you recall, in December of last year, this board agreed to sign on to the settlement. We're now at a point where we may be seeing some money in the near term. So just to kind of recap, the settlement is between the three largest drug distributors, McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen. And there's a separate settlement agreement with one manufacturer, which is Janssen Pharmaceuticals. There is still ongoing litigation with some pharmaceutical company or some pharmacies. North Dakota is less impacted by that just because of the fact that some of these large pharmacies aren't doing business in our state. So this this settlement is the primary heavy hitters. But there is potential that there would be additional settlements that may bring in more money to us, but this would be the primary. So how the settlement agreement is written, because counsel for the North Dakota political subdivisions did not come to an agreement with the North Dakota Attorney General's Office. Our settlement is governed by the default settlement agreement, if you recall, when we spoke about this last December, which the default settlement agreement provides that fifteen percent goes to the state. Seventy percent goes into an abatement account. The specifics as to how that money will be spent or who is the deciders as to how that money is to be spent as yet to determine, and then fifteen percent goes to political subdivisions. The payments are made over a span of eighteen years, so we'll receive our first payment this year. That will be approximately twelve thousand dollars, and the the payment amounts aren't the same every year simply because one of the settlement agreements is is different than the other in the time duration and then how it's calculated as well. Approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollars will be what is coming into Grand Forks County from this settlement agreement. This afternoon or this morning, excuse me, I had a conference call with our counsel for Grand Forks County. They're still waiting on some clarification as to how this money can be spent. They believe that approximately eighty five percent of the money we get from the settlement needs to be used for opioid remediation. Specifically, what will qualify for that, they haven't received a ton of guidance, so they're advising that once we start receiving these payments, we hold on to them for now and and not spend those funds until we receive kind of some more guidance. With that said, given the amount we get each year, I don't think there's anything that Brad will be able to do with it. But they hope to have some more guidance for us as there any questions? We'll continue to keep the board informed as I learn more on this.
Maybe reports. Commissioner Peach.
I have nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Knopf.
The only thing I have is August sixth. I was, what was I? I I can't find my word, the four Hers got together at the at the the civic, through the center out here, the for the marketplace on on Saturday, and so the four Hers each year come together and we had four groups this year that have a cook-off, and so what they do is they get a twenty dollar coupon, and so they have to take that twenty dollar coupon and buy things at the marketplace to make their recipe, and so then and then there's one surprise vegetable that we give them that they have to put in their recipe. And so so it was fun, it was a good year again, and so enjoyed doing that, but that would have been through NDSU, the the four H group there, and so and then August seventeenth is the library meeting. I do have a question on a guest here and costs with that, and we kind of talked about some of that last time. But that was, yeah, I see it for the library, but personally I have taken a chair from before, that was one that we were giving, one given away, giving away, and so I need to know the costs for that. I am willing to to pay whatever the cost, but I need that from you. Need to have your approval on that one, because I don't want to just take.
Be the spender. A bee disometer.
Oh. So so your thoughts?
Who would establish the price for that kind of thing, Director Administration?
Wait a minute, is this one of these chairs that's not being used?
It was one that, you know, you got run warm up there that's full of desks that were our, the commission desks, and then you got another room that, and they were like computer desk chairs, they're not the hardwood ones like these.
What do you want to do with this chair?
I took it home.
Oh. I was gonna say, we would normally just donate it to charity or whatever, so.
I could change my name.
Same thing. You know, we can't get rid of that, I mean, there is no market for most of that, so. Mr. Ford, maybe you want to come up with a price on that chair?
Dollar.
I I have a price in mind, sir.
Yes. Three.
No, I don't want to get that.
A dollar.
There you go.
But I'll talk to Mr. Ford and we'll come up with the price, if that's all right.
Be appropriate some sort.
Yeah, most of them are worth maybe ten to twenty dollars maximum, that's. In fact, when I talked to Mr. Herbeck, deals in used furniture, where he says you can't give it away right now, so. So, yeah, let's come up with a price on that, we'll get rid of it.
All right, thank you, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that and that I was being honest, so that's all I have.
History.
Nothing except the, there is an upcoming town hall endorsement, as they were saying, and I'm looking forward to it, I hope people show up, because I get lots of people talking to me and asking about it. And in five minutes, they kind of think, oh, I see. So it's all about information and stopping misinformation, so I hope we can get people to decide all. Then what if it, what if decided is that?
Ross.
At a fair board meeting last week, and we talked about expenses and everything for the fair. It appears from the information that they're lost about a hundred thousand dollars. And so you know, they had that rain out on Friday night, which was kind of costly, but other than that, they they said they're doing okay, because they got that money from Delance Sandin when he passed away. They get the money from the county, so they're about sixty thousand to the good.
I'll just add to that, having said on the fair board that they didn't make money any, basically. I mean, that it's not a moneymaker. And that was the the price that you shared with me, that was probably higher than than. Seen past years.
So, other than that, I have MPO tomorrow. I have no bridges. What we're gonna talk about, but it's on the agenda, sure.
What is the status on the bridge?
I don't think the city's taking any action at all on either Elks or Thirty Second Avenue at this point. I think the city is supporting the Merrifield Bridge. AK the Roland Young Memorial Bridge. So I I honestly think with all the the homes that would be affected, the schools that would be affected by, just don't know if the city wants to get involved in it. When you look at Thirty Second Avenue, where it goes over into a farm field, East Grand Forks doesn't lose anything. There's nobody just going to be in jeopardy over there with the bridge over on that side. But on our side, serious things they have to consider, so. Don't know where it's going.
What further?
Well, that's why I said the Merrifield. Merrifield.
Well, what is forty seventh, is that, that's?
That's out of it altogether, that wasn't even in, being considered. That was one of the ones originally, but I think there was too many issues with flow and stuff like that.
Eastside didn't want it, it's way too far south for that.
South for people to travel.
Yeah.
The the hydraulic study.
Hydraulics.
Didn't support, they had to eliminate it.
So, we're not, I, yeah. We'll be at the meeting Thursday night in Emorydall. When we talk to the Office Club here, coming up on the twenty sixth, I think. Were we talking about home rule?
Hey. I had three different meetings that really there wasn't anything new to bring before us. The the building committee on the Correctional Center, the Dentation Center, we're gonna start meeting every two weeks, but because of a problem, it's gonna be three this time, so hopefully we'll have some more information in three weeks. Two weeks, I think. And at this late hour, I hate to bring up problem, but it's kind of under committee reports, more like unfinished business. When we voted on the consultants and we voted down the consultants at halftime for for six months, I should say. Okay, Ms. Nelson advised me that I I kind of assumed or we all thought that that meant they were out of the budget, they're still in the budget full time.
Yep.
So we need to address that. So.
Till the end of the year, right?
Yeah, yeah, but but they're still in the budget.
This is the twenty twenty three.
Still in the budget for twenty twenty three. So if we you know, if we don't want them halftime, we want them full time, and I think the consensus at least between three commissioners was that we did not. So if we do not, then we need a motion to take them out of the twenty twenty three budget.
Actually, that's what we did, but.
Yeah, no, we didn't, we only took them out, we we but there was an attempt to make them for half the year in that deal, so. Yeah, so you're making a motion to not fund them in twenty twenty three. Okay, that's second, Commissioner Ross, seconds. Yes, Commissioner.
Discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Right.
Money is in the budget, does it disappear from the budget, does it go partly to the general fund and partly to Director Administration? What, where where does it go?
It just goes out of the budget, not a expenditure, so the money is, you know, either the tax.
Will be less.
The taxes will be less, although we do have, and that'll come up in another meeting, we do have one problem that needs addressing with about how much money, forty thousand?
Should, no, should I just briefly tell them?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's approximately just over fifteen thousand dollars. Found out Wendy went at the library, did not levy enough money in twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three, but we're just talking about twenty twenty three now. If her budget, it cannot be less than the previous three-year average levy in dollars. It is in twenty twenty three, she needs to levy just over fifteen thousand dollars more. And if we take it out of our cash or interim cash, we'll stay the same, our budget stays the same. Impacts cash fifteen, just over fifteen thousand dollars, so I would like to do that for the final budget hearing September.
And that's, that number's actually smaller than I thought, so, okay. Any other discussion on this?
Yes, the question that I have about take all the, assuming we take all, on the other budget for the consultants. What is it do? What will be required from those of us on the commission, yourself, Mr. Ford, and I especially who seem to go at the Pentagon, to the ACC meetings and so on? Do we need to provide a little more for that since we can't just have the consultants go do these things? Or do we have enough in the budget so that we can start attending those things again? For a while with the airfares, the summers, it looked like our commission travel was done for that. But now that the things have gone down, probably going to need to keep community visits going. We know the city will do it, and on behalf of Grand Sky, we need to be making a presence of some of it, so. I don't know if that fits in the administration, travel budget already, or if some needs to be put in there?
I, Commissioner Chair, Commissioner Ian, I put twelve thousand in the commission travel budget, and and I factor in at least two community visits for that for a commissioner, so there is travel for commissions, you know, whether it's NACO or Grand Forks Days at the Capitol, or Langley or Lackland, there is travel money for the commission.
Okay, any further discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, aye?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioners Ian and Peach oppose the motion. Motion passes, the consultants are dropped from our budget.
Mr. Chairman, can we have another motion then to for, to allow me to increase the library budget and decrease the cash in the final budget?
Okay. So would someone make a motion to increase the library budget fifteen thousand dollars?
Not exactly fifteen.
Oh.
Don't have the exact figure, but so they don't decrease over the prior three years?
Okay. For a month, so that the their compensation doesn't decrease over the past three years. Commissioner Knopf makes a motion, do we have a second? Second, second, Commissioner Ian. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the the last item, it's just informational, letting you know how much we receive from the North Dakota Insurance or Recorder Information Network. Our share was fourteen thousand twenty one dollars fifty five dollars or fifty five cents, and what changed this time is that a portion of it went to the general fund and was directed to go to the general fund, and the rest stays with the recorder in the tech. You could choose to give it all to the tech fund, it's a new, new thing that they decided that some of the. You said that the state? Yeah, this, yeah, stated.
Who are tech funds, that's what I'm saying.
Well, part, it all used to go to the recorder's tech fund. Now they're saying a portion of it can go to the general fund, but it doesn't happen.
No.
But we did put it there, but we could take it out if you decided all should go to the tech fund.
Well, I think it would be nice, can we wait a little bit on this?
Yeah.
It would be nice to hear from our new technology director.
No.
No.
This is a recorder.
Recorder.
She, the technology director does not get this money, or does she? She keeps that money, does she not? She uses it to fund, she averages it, bunch of budget and first, the salaries. So that's how they use the money and for other things.
Doesn't get affect us at the commission budget that much, I just assume it all go to the recorder.
Yeah, because if she doesn't get the money, she has to come to us, you know, the official budget, so yeah, hyper, yeah, somebody make the motion. Some move, motion by Commissioner Ross, get the money go to the reporters' office. Second, like Commissioner Knopf, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
I think we've come to the end, Commissioner Ross.
I make a motion to a chair.
Thank you. We have a second.
I second that motion.
Too late, Commissioner Peach.
Dark.
All in favor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 I saw your question. I'll, I'll respond, but. The answer is there is not a comparison. We're gonna do that. We're gonna do that, so I appreciate that. Yep.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Well, the recorder's gonna be very happy. She wasn't even gonna ask.
What did it?
Twenty six hundred dollars. I mean, she's come forward and. Let, she, her money is.